So Commissioner Reese is running late, so I'm going to go ahead and start the meeting. So as to keep us on time, we've got some very special guests. We've got a half of room filled with special guests, so we're delighted that you're here. This is a presentation from the Hamilton County Domestic Violence Task Force, and we're getting an update from the group. And I can see that, and we've got a handout with a multitude of partners on it. So I just want to say, thank you for the partnership. Thank you for the work we're doing. All of the commissioners, at one point or another, have initiated things related to gender-based violence or domestic violence. And so we're really glad that you're in that space and doing the good work on behalf of the county. So Commissioner Dumas, do you want to say anything before we get started with the presentation?
Certainly. I'm welcome. So glad to see you all. I'm looking at all the partners, too. And so it's just heartwarming to know and to get to know more about what you're going to talk about, because domestic violence, of course, is very close to my heart, because I am a survivor. And so when Mary came to me and talked about the task force, I said, we've got to know more. So I'll see a little bit after we finish.
Yeah, I do want to, Mary, I don't know if you're going to start the presentation, but Mary Mountie, who is the Director of the Commission on Women and Girls, has been a participant on the task force and I'm sure a driving force within the organization. So who is starting out? Mary, oh, the Sheriff, Charmaine McGuffey is starting out. I beg your pardon, Sheriff.
It's all good. Thank you. And we have a presentation, a slide presentation to present. So, thank you very much, Commissioners. I appreciate you hosting us here and all of the partners that work so hard to bring these things to fruition. And you can see all the partnerships that have joined our task force, and there are even more coming. I mean, we are still attracting partners to the table as we speak, because what we are getting accomplished in this task force for domestic violence is, well, it's phenomenal. And I want to show you on the very next slide. Here, I've got the, hold on. There we go. So this is how we started out. And I'll just give you an intro. You know, it came to my attention, there was a particular domestic violence situation that was not handled very well, all right? And as I dissected that situation and realized the danger that the survivor was placed in and so forth, and I started talking and thinking about what we could do better. So I, of course, contacted Judge Flotman, who, interestingly enough, was working on the exact same issue that I was working on. And we both decided, you know what, we have to bring everybody to the table. We have to figure these things out, so that this doesn't happen again. And that's exactly what we did. We created a task force. And the first part of the task force was to put together this diagram. And what you'll see on this diagram, and I don't need to read everything on here, because you can see how complicated it is, but there are so many partners here regarding what happens when someone comes to the court, someone comes to deputies and says, I'm a survivor, I need help, this is what's going on. All of these things interact and have to happen. Now, they're color-coded, because what we found out is there are gaps. There are gaps in the system. There are gaps in the way the system works. Some of it, in large part, is due to the fact that, you know, we haven't really had a task force to make sure that all partners are working in sync. And that is what we found out when we all came together. All of the different people at the table offer something to this problem. And we have been able to solve some of the issues. The gaps that exist for law enforcement, I'll just quickly say, are things like, first of all, we've trained officers, we've trained them expertly to go into a situation, separate the parties, somebody gets arrested, somebody doesn't, explain the situation, and so forth. But what we're finding is, officers also need to understand what the civil process is. They, we are asking them to help with varying agencies, all the different agencies in Hamilton County. Help the Hamilton County Sheriff's Office when we are enforcing a protection order, when we're enforcing certain rules of the court regarding protecting survivors of domestic violence. And some of those things, we're, you know, we're partnering right now and working on those, those issues. So I'll go to the next slide and talk about what those are. So what we've been able to do, first of all, we're pointing out to people that we only have four officers serving all of Hamilton County between 8:00 AM and 4:00 PM. And we know that, you know, domestic violence happens all days and nights and things like that. So, and there are all manner of protective orders that are issued by a judge, that we need help in serving, and we need officers to do these things. The second bullet point, which is work successfully with the outside agencies in serving and properly filing for service on these returns. When someone calls us and they're having an issue of domestic violence, and we don't respond appropriately, or certain officers may, because they don't understand it, may not be filing these protective orders, they get dismissed. And then the victim, or the survivor of this behavior, is left in the lurch. Like, well, what do I do? And we want women to have more confidence, and men, if they're a survivor of domestic violence. We want them to have confidence in the process. So we, we have the DV force on the next, the next bullet there. And what I've done is I presented to the Hamilton County Police Association, and at the Chiefs Meeting, which is all of the law enforcement partners in this arena, we're all collaborating together to make sure that these gaps are closed, and that if there is training that's necessary, we're all getting that training. Court service deputies will serve a respondent in court with DVs and CPOs. And, you know, we work with the prosecutor in these cases, and I'll note to you, that's county and city prosecutors have shown up for this task force. You know, I provide deputies to safeguard the victim while waiting in the courthouse, so that they're not bullied and intimidated by the person who is, you know, the, who's the perpetrator of this violence. So those are things that we are doing in the law enforcement arena. This task force is, is a collaboration that, a model that is used, that I've used very successfully to address large issues, problems throughout the county. And you're going to hear from our other respondents here, our other, the judge and so forth. And they're going to tell you more about the success of this program, because it is very successful. We have been meeting for a year, by the way, every other week. So it's a, quite the commitment of time for the people that are seated here in the room. So I am going to cede over now to Judge Flotman, and she'll be able to step up and talk.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners, for giving us this time today. I'm so excited to be here, especially with my partners and all the other people in this room who are all partners of this. So as you may know, the Domestic Relations Court is where you come if you have violence in your family or in your household. So, like Sheriff explained, there were lots of gaps in the system, things that I didn't know the sheriff would do or would not do, things I didn't understand that Women Helping Women would do or would not do. So the benefits have been palpable and tangible for Domestic Relations Court. So let me give you an idea of some of those, if I know which button to press. Well, it's not that one. Okay, so here are some of the things that we've, we've done, changes, all of these changes have been made directly as a result of this task force and the education they have given me. First, we now have an office space in Domestic Relations Court, which is at 800 Broadway, for the Advocates for Women Helping Women. Survivors of domestic violence are entitled to have an advocate with them. Previously, because they were only at the main courthouse across the street, we would have to call, or they would have to call, the advocate would have to come over. So this is a big time saver. What we're trying to do overall is remove barriers to people getting these orders. And what was happening is the system was failing them, because we weren't all communicating. So this, this is a great example of that. We've also instituted giving each petitioner two copies of her order. If you get an order for domestic violence, the sheriff will try to serve it, but as Sheriff McGuffey said, their task force is only eight to four. So what if you leave court at four, and you don't get home till five, and there's the person that the sheriff was supposed to be removed from your home, in your home? Well, then you call your local police officer, because you now have a second copy. I know that seems like a small thing, but Women Helping Women feedback, we've gotten from them, has been that it's, it's made a tremendous difference. I've created a dedicated team of our magistrates, where we have four magistrates who are receiving special training in domestic violence, trauma-based training, information about the cycle of domestic violence, understanding that sometimes it takes a victim up to seven or more times to try to break away before she or he becomes a survivor. So they're specially trained, and instead of it being sort of a crapshoot, which of the 15 magistrates would hear your request for an order? And I want to make sure you understand, it's generally, oh, my timer didn't go off. Somebody's going to have to shut me up when I'm up to five minutes. Sorry. Good luck with that. No. So, anyway, the, some of our magistrates were better trained than others. We want to have a reliable, standardized process, so that the public knows, the attorneys know, and the advocates know, that what they're going to get is somebody who's specially trained. So that's made a big difference. Now, we used to, if, if the magistrate turns you down, would just say dismissed. Now we tell you why. We have, having them write in the order and explanation, so that that person who thought she or he needed an order didn't get it, they would have some understanding of what the basis was. We've updated our waiver of service, because we have the city prosecutor and the county prosecutors on board. When you violate an order from, even though I'm a civil court, if you violate my civil order, you can get arrested. Well, they can't prosecute you if they can't prove you knew you had the order. You have to have service. So we've updated our waiver of service. And now, we, we got from, I think, Hamilton County Prosecutor's Office a pamphlet, because different courts offer different orders. Like I said, we're family and household. If it's two neighbors fighting, you go see Magistrate Baradon or Magistrate Birding in the General Division. Let me see if I can figure these things out yet. Oh, good. Okay, we're working with interpreters. This is a huge, I know you just did our budget, huge line item on our budget is interpreters. But a lot of people, and I will let the clerk speak more to that, one of the barriers has been language. We're tracking data on domestic violence by zip codes, so we know where we can focus our training on the other law enforcement officers. Working with the sheriff, we have now a deputy on the second floor, where these are heard full-time, and the deputy keeps the petitioners up by him or her, and the respondents, the person who's being accused, goes to the end. So as Sheriff was saying, we don't have any pressure or attempts to intimidate. We've changed our hearing times to make them longer, and we had this amazing speaker that the Ohio Supreme Court paid for on June 17th, Mark Nguyen, nationally-known trainer, gave a seminar on domestic violence. We had 131, 137 people attend. It was a lot of people in this room. All the people from my court, except for a skeleton crew, police officers, probation, Women Helping Women, and we had this incredible training. So let me just give you some stats, and then I really will sit down. So you can see from these slides, that unfortunately, when we, so you come in and you get the initial order, then the next hearing, you'd get the full order, the permanent order. We lose a lot of people along the way. Sometimes they don't show up, sometimes they come up and request dismissal. Since this task force has begun, the number of petitioners who are requesting dismissal has dropped, and I owe that completely to the task force. The sheriffs are doing a better job, because they understand what we need. We're doing a much better job of telling the sheriff what we need. They're the people who have to knock on the door. Women Helping Women understands what we need. So we're going to keep working on that. So thank you so much for your time and interest, and I do know that I can tell you that we'll, we'll keep doing this work. It's not going anywhere. Thank you.
All right. Thank you all for having us here. I think one of the things that you've heard both from Judge Flotman and Sheriff McGuffey, is that there are significant gaps and barriers. And us all working together, we're able to, to figure out what they are and figure out how we can address them. And from our perspective at the Clerk's Office, paperwork sometimes is a barrier. And we need these partnerships to ensure that we get the processes right. You've heard me talk previously in previous presentations about this process we put in place to streamline our stalking, sexual order, civil protection orders over in the Common Pleas Court. And what we did was we moved the process online. So that way, you can fill out the paperwork, quite frankly, when there's a police officer standing in front of you. You can scan a QR code that we've given on business cards to every law enforcement agency in the county. And if they, and if a police officer comes to a situation, and they say, listen, your best course of action here is to get a protection order, you can start that paperwork immediately. And you come to the courthouse, and you give us your confirmation number, and we take you right upstairs to the magistrates to have that first hearing. That process right there has severely reduced the amount of time it takes people to get through the Common Pleas Court. Our goal, through, in working with the task force, is to now move this process over also for domestic violence cases. What we've learned is that domestic violence protection orders are more complicated because of the different agencies involved, and the different statutory and regulatory requirements as to the process and how they have to be served. And so we are, we are working with this task force to be able to develop this process, also in DV court. The goal is hopefully to have it be one QR code, one single point of entry, and that through the questions that you are answering, it will direct you into which court is appropriate for you, domestic violence, domestic relations, or the Common Pleas Court. And just to show you how big of an impact this process has had, the last full year for which we did not have this process in place was 2021. You've seen a nearly 40% increase in protection orders that have been filed, and that, in my opinion, does not represent new need. It's his need that was always there. It's just people were not being taken care of. The last thing I will say on that, to the point that Judge Flotman made, language continues to be an issue, and that is one of the things that we have also worked at the task force to try to ensure that we have translation services and interpreter services. When we started this process at Common Pleas, we were losing about 10% of people that came to file for a protection order, to actually go through the entire process. As we started looking at why, it became clear that the reason was, there were not enough translation services and interpreter services. So we have partnered with agencies to ensure that we have those services, and we are trying to close that gap. Last thing I will say is because at the Clerk's Office, we are generally that first line, that frontline of people coming to the courthouse to access the courts for their rights, we need to make sure that our staff is fully trained and understands what to look for, that people may be in crisis, and how they can provide assistance. And so we are working diligently to ensure that there is robust, trauma-informed training, so our staff understands when they need to escalate an issue, to maybe bring in a manager or supervisor, to ensure that we are coordinating with all these other partner agencies to get people the help that they need. And one of the things that we've worked on through this partnership, is a safe waiting space at the courthouse for victims. Historically, the victims would have to wait out in the hallway like everyone else in the courthouse, and that presented problems when the person they're seeking protection from sometimes is sitting right next to them. So the goal is to make sure that people are safe, they feel protected, and they understand that we are all there to help them, especially when trying to protect this vulnerable population. With that, I believe I'll turn it back over to Sheriff McGuffey.
Thank you. I'd like to close with this. You know, for policing agencies and police officers, the reality is, and has been for a very, very long time, that they feel sometimes as though they're spinning their wheels, because people who are survivors of domestic violence will call the police, but then not follow up with the court proceedings or the protection orders. And they'll do that over and over again. And I, we do understand that officers can feel frustrated, they can feel a little angry that they put a lot of their time and effort into helping someone who's a survivor of domestic violence, only to have that person drop that case. What I want to say, and how we're going to address that is this, look, there are things that we can fix in this system. And, you know, to place it on people who are the survivor and say, well, you know, our frustration is that the survivor doesn't follow through. Our message, my message to every police officer in this arena is this, let's fix what we know are gaps and barriers for these people who are survivors. Then, let's take a look at the statistics. Then, let's start addressing other issues. But until we fix the issues that we have, and we have them, they're there, we're going to continue to meet every two weeks. It's ongoing. It's been going on for a year. We've been solving it, and there's more to do, and we're going to do those things. Then we can look at the statistics and feel confident that law enforcement has done everything that we can possibly do. Thank you. And the task force as well.
Well, thank you all very much. First of all, I wanted to say that I was running behind, because we, it's also Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and we had our Cancer Caucus today that I led. And then we were up at the 513 Relief Bus, and people were there getting prostate cancer screenings. It's a new way to do it. With UCL, so I was helping people in mammography. It's packed over there in Avondale at the Urban League parking lot. So then I rushed down here. But I want to, first of all, say it's very impressive to have the task force of bringing all the components to the table. And many of you mentioned getting the feedback from Women Helping Women. So we've gone from feedback to action, and then bringing everybody from the sheriff's component to our wonderful judge, and she said that she's gotten her pieces together as well. Then the clerk, I mean, people don't think about all these different wheels that have to hit, and we have to all be going in the same direction. And so I think with the Hamilton County Domestic Violence Task Force, that was only established since this January of this year, you've done a lot to get the wheel going in the right direction, breaking down the barriers, the silos, cutting the red tape. And I call it One Hamilton County. So I just wanted to say, congratulations, thanks, thanks, and continuing to understanding that there's more barriers, more work to do, but a lot has been done with communication, breaking the silos, getting the work done, and ultimately helping the victim. Because a victim doesn't understand all the, they don't know all the lingo and all of that. All they know is they need some help, and they want someone to help them. So just wanted to congratulate you on that. I'll go back to Vice President Freehouse.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. Thanks for the presentation. With the deference of the Commissioner, I'm going to read out the list of partners, because you're all in this room. And so I do want to make sure that, we heard from the significant partners, we also have many other partners that are listed, and I just want to highlight it. So it's the Sheriff's Office, the Court of Domestic Relations, the Clerk of Courts, the Court of Common Pleas, the Hamilton County Municipal Court, the Prosecutor's Office, the City of Cincinnati Prosecutor's Office, Hamilton County Probation Department, Women Helping Women, the Hamilton County Commission on Women and Girls, Tri Health Cares, YWCA, Greater Cincinnati Legal Aid, Ohio Crime Victim Justice Center, and UC College of Law DV Clinic. I mean, honestly, it's a very impressive list of partners. And so I just want to make sure that, credit where credit is, do thanks to all of you for doing this work and getting together on a regular basis to try to solve. What strikes me about this is that it's a collaborative effort, but it's clear to me that you're listening to the people that are actually in the field, and people that have experienced domestic violence, which is the way you learn about the gaps, and then try to figure out how to solve. So I think that is a really impressive approach. It's always the most effective approach, and, and you all are spending the time to listen and then implement what you're learning from folks with the experience, the everyday experience. So I have a question related to divert. So the Commission on Women and Girls, a couple of years ago, and with the county commissioner's support, we implemented divert county-wide. It was a city program, it's now a county-wide program, where we've got Women Helping Women as the provider, 24/7 available, if there's an emergency run to a domestic violence situation. And so if the family needs to be secured, or that law enforcement needs additional assistance, Women Helping Women goes out and does that work in a case of domestic violence. Can you help me understand what the impact of that program has been, or, or maybe the question is where the intersection is with the work that you are doing, so that we can better understand? You know, we, we had policy direction, we funded the program. What is the impact of that? And is there more to be done, perhaps, on that front?
Yes, and thank you. Thank you very much, Commissioner, for that question. Divert is embedded in our law enforcement efforts across the board with the city and county law enforcement. And I will tell you, they are very instrumental in communicating with survivors of domestic violence. They partner with us very well, they communicate well, and they are at the table, too, with this effort. We have seen, as far as our success rates, we have seen a better outcome overall for survivors of domestic violence, because, you know, and just in reality, when the police get there, when we get there, we have a particular boundary, right, that our knowledge stops at a certain point, when it comes to trauma victims and so forth, and what we do. And that's where divert fills in that gap, because those are women that can direct survivors to the next step, that hold their hand, if necessary, that walk them through that process, that come to this table and tell us in real time what someone actually needs, particularly when there's children involved, when there are pets involved, things like that. So divert has been very successful. I do suggest that any police department that doesn't utilize divert, that they start thinking about funding it now, and get it on board, because it makes a huge difference in the way we approach people who have experienced violence.
And on that note, so we, the county is funding the program, so it is available and free of charge to anybody that would like to utilize it. So maybe we'll offline talk about those jurisdictions that are not yet on board.
Yes.
See if we can, maybe go to a Chiefs Meeting and get them on board, make a presentation. We've done it before, we can do it again, and just as a reminder. So I appreciate that. I don't, I don't have any sense of how many are still out there that are not part of the program, but maybe we-
There are a few.
Okay.
There are a few, and I do, I love that idea. I would love to present with you, Commissioner, at the Chiefs Meeting. I think it would be very, very helpful.
Okay. And then one last thing. You mentioned that, you know, a lot of what you're doing is filling gaps. As you learn about a gap, or a situation where people are sitting too close to one another, or the, the help desk isn't set up correctly, you're managing that and responding to what you know. As you look into the future, as you continue to meet, is there anything that has already been identified as a gap that you're still working on, that you haven't quite worked out, or, just to give us a sense of, of how the work will continue and looking at?
Well, I will say two things. One, I'm, I will tell you that we now have a new dog warden, which I'm sure you're aware of, in Hamilton County.
She's in the back.
Yes. Who attends our meetings, and she is the real deal. But what she has brought to us is the idea about pets, because some women will not leave the home, because the pet will be left behind, the dog, the cat, et cetera. And what will we do to help that woman who doesn't want to leave that pet? We are fashioning, with her help, a rescue program that will be sponsored with foster parents, who volunteer to take that pet and keep it for the period of time that it takes this person to work their way out of that situation, and then return the animal. And she is bringing forth resources with veterinarian resources, food resources, things like that, that we can say to some, to someone who says, I can't leave my dog behind, because I'm afraid of what might happen to my dog. We can say to that woman, we will take your dog, your dog will be safe with a certified foster parent, and then we will give that dog back to you when you are more stable, when you're ready, you know? And the dog is now in a safe environment, or cat, or whatever the animal. And that has been something that we've never done before in Hamilton County. So that, along with the fact that training, I think, is necessary. I think training across the board for all officers in Hamilton County, everybody that works in this arena, or might touch it in a uniform way, we have to improve training to talk about strangulation, and what strangulation is, and the fact that we're identifying that now as something that is very cause and effect, that we need to pay attention to, as well as the process of how we file those protection orders. Super important to anyone who's a survivor.
Great. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Judge, you wanted to add to that?
Commissioner Reese, yes, or President Reese, just briefly, we are working with the Child Support Enforcement Agency in Hamilton County, in order to streamline the process for petitioners to seek child support from the respondent when they share a child in common. That's a lot of bureaucracy to get through. And the CSEA is extremely busy, but we've identified some methods. One would be to have a dedicated person at the CSEA that Women Helping Women could contact, or our magistrates could contact, to begin the process, because very often, the victim, or the survivor, does not want to have any further dealings and request child support, when it's something the child needs and that parent needs. So we're going to try to streamline that process. That's another gap that we're working on. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will say, the dog warden has been here not that long, and she's come with so many innovative things. So we really appreciate that. One thing, before I go to Commissioner Dumas, I just want to highlight, I know we have Women Helping Women, Women and Girls Commission, but- Women Helping Women, Women and Girls Commission, but want to make sure on the domestic violence, that a man may be a victim of domestic violence as well. So this program is for everybody, no matter who the victim, over 20% the judge said. So I know we have a lot on here, say, Women Helping Women, Women and Girls, those are great, but we want to also know that you are also looking at whoever the victim is. It applies to everybody. Commissioner Dumas?
Thank you so much. Thank you all for your presentations. I have a lot to say, but I'm going to make it short. You guys, your task force, realize the importance of domestic violence. People don't want to talk about domestic violence, they want to whisper about domestic violence. We know October is Breast Cancer Awareness and Domestic Violence, and so now we're talking about it, we have to talk about it, you're being about it. Just to think about, you have been meeting every other week about this. Words cannot express just my appreciation and how hard you guys are working for this as a survivor. It's easier to talk about a health issue, breast cancer awareness, which I've had that in my family too, but it's not easy to talk about people that are hurting other people, you know? I want to thank you, Sheriff McGuffey. When we first started giving out the pens, and police and sheriffs, they wear their pink pens, and I said, Sheriff, do you think you could wear the purple? Absolutely, just give me some. And so we did, and Bishop Hilton has some purple pens for those who may want some. We're technically supporting Domestic Violence Month on this Thursday, if you guys would like to come, guys and ladies would like to come to celebrate and proclaim the month. My dream, and most of my dreams I try to make a reality, my dream is that when October comes, you see all the football players with their pink shirts, pink socks, pink shoes, and that's great. But because domestic violence normally involves men that are hurting women, but there are also men that get hurt, we just don't talk about it. And my dream is to get the NFL to recognize domestic violence, and for one time, see somebody in a purple shirt or purple shoes, and I'm working toward that, and I think it will happen. You guys are awesome. I know Mary was saying I could sit in sometimes, and I don't need to, what do I need to sit in for? I wanted to talk about diverse, who's now, I think, in three counties. They're just spreading like wildfire. I mean, we funded them, and they're doing a great job with what they do. They said I have to start over. No. People couldn't hear me. But anyway, I'm just very emotional about this, of course. I thank all of you for what you're doing, the time that you're spending, the changes that you're making, and I just want people to feel comfortable to talk about domestic violence as they do about cancer, breast cancer awareness, and it will come. And thanks to you guys, I'm sure it will come. And I think that's all I have. You guys are awesome. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for the presentation, we really appreciate it. And I'm going to quickly make a motion, we're going into, I make a motion to go into Executive Session 12122G3, to conduct a conference with an attorney for the public body concerning MSD.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Treehouse? Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.